Ready, Dan?
Yep.
Ready, y'all? I'm sitting here.
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Pardon me. And welcome to the Village Jim and Maranick Special Board of Trustees meeting. We're here tonight to discuss a proposal by Luna for an affordable housing development at the Hunter Tier. I need a motion, open the meeting. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Folks, would you mind introducing yourselves? And this is your stage now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Does the mic there or if you want to sit, you can use this?
Yes.
Yeah. Be here, be here. Okay. So if I'm, I'd like to get my colleague.
Big up, please.
Yeah. You either have to speak really loud or stand up there at the other mic because they can't hear you in the room with that one.
Able to hear you on.
Okay.
Please hear the voice.
That's back to you.
Thank you.
Is this better?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So first, I'd like to say thank you for having us here on this rainy, pre-Thanksgiving day. We appreciate the opportunity to come in and present our vision for this project to you. I, so our project that we're presenting today for the Hunter Tier, all for reparking development across the street is today, we'll be presenting to you a little bit about who we are as a location, as a group. I'll introduce my colleagues in a moment. Then we'll go through our proposal for the development, our vision, and then we'll have
Okay.
We'll, of course, dive into the affordable housing, even though it's a, you know, a major component to this development proposal. So my name is Zulay K. Knight. I'm a director of development at BRP. I'm one of the co-developers of this project for you today. My colleague, Andy Cohen, managing director of BRP, will be up here in a moment. And representing our architect, G F fifty-five, is the founding partner, David Gross. So now I'm going to turn it over to Andy Cohen to talk a little bit about the R G development. So the microphone works better here.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. So a little bit about BRP. We are a large affordable and affordable housing developer located in New York City. We're active in New York, in Westchester, and we'll go through some of our projects soon. New Jersey, we have a project in Washington DC as well. We've got fifty-seven hundred units of mixed income affordable housing in our portfolio, mostly new construction. We've been around since two thousand and three. And a lot of us at the firm come from a background of affordable housing. Personally, I worked at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation Development under the Bloomberg administration for six years. And I've been at ten year, BRP for ten years. For the next slide. So, you know, as I had mentioned, we, you know, we develop across the spectrum of housing from low until hundred percent low-income projects to mixed income workforce developments and to market rate projects. The first project we want to highlight is the Motives. It's located in New Rochelle, was our first development in New Rochelle. It's a hundred and seventy-two units, rental units, and similar scale to sort of what we'd be proposing here with.
Sent it to Jack.
That project, we worked closely with the city of New Rochelle and the New Rochelle IDA, Westchester County Government on that project. And we're, at least, we came to market in spring of twenty-three. And it's going very well. It should be a good representation of sort of the scale which we'd be proposing here. Next slide, please. The next, this next project, while a totally different scale, and clearly wouldn't make sense, a lot of sense in Village of Maranick, just sort of gives an example of a complex mixed income development that we built in Jamaica, Queens in coordination with HCR, State Housing Agency, HPD, Cities Housing Agency, and HDC, the bonding agency for New York City. So we structured this, this project from a financing perspective, kind of similar to what we would do here. So we have a few different subsidy sources. We have a, we structured this with loan housing tax credits, with some private equity. Really, this deal had about fifteen sources of financing to get this done. But affordability runs the gamut from very low income, thirty percent of AMI, all the way up to in New York City, a hundred and sixty-five percent of AMI for the upper tier units, albeit rents are really priced more like one-thirty AMI for those with the students. Next slide, please. Another example of sort of a larger mixed income development, work development in the Bronx. This one skews a little bit more low income. We developed this in partnership with the city of New York. Total of five buildings, we built two of the five buildings totaling four hundred and ninety-eight units. And we started in the second phase, the end of, mid, mid twenty, mid twenty twenty-four. But this deal is very energy efficient. We're building a passive house building in our second phase. A lot of community facilities provided. So it's affordable housing ranging again from like the very low to around a hundred, a hundred and ten percent of AMI. So sort of mid-level workforce. And this project has a YMCA, fifty thousand square YMCA that we built in the base of one of the buildings. The first full-service YMCA in the Bronx, aside from, from Riverdale. And a local cable access TV network has their headquarters in the lobby of one of our buildings, as well as a bunch of other community facility and community oriented research space. Next slide, please. In class, this is one of my favorite projects. So this is located in the Flatbush neighborhood in Brooklyn. This project, we actually, similar to, to the Luna, this was located on a municipal parking lot. And so we worked with the city of New York. We built a parking garage underground to replace all the parking that was, that was lost due to development. There's also Caribbean Market, a vendor's market that was on the ground floor. They'd been operating for about twenty years. So as part of this development, we worked with the community, local community groups. And we relocated the Caribbean market for a three-year period while we built this and ran leased out space for them, built it out, ran that market for three years, and then moved all the vendors back to this building and grabbed a whole range of brand new state-of-the-art market and built two hundred and fifty-five units of mixed income workforce housing above. And again, this same, same sort of, same thesis here. We're building really for, you know, low-income really workforce. So we really target on a lot of our developments. You know, the folks that are mostly for affordable housing, just from a supply, supply and demand perspective, but also sort of that missing middle. So we have a lot of sort of working families who earn too much to qualify for what's traditionally low-income housing, tax credit housing. So sixty percent of AMI and below, but not enough to qualify to really afford market rate housing. And these are the, these are the tenants and the residents who are leaving this region because it's just too expensive to live. And this is sort of the, the population that the government generally doesn't really target with programs. So there aren't a lot of subsidy programs, there aren't tax credits, there aren't bond programs to finance housing that really meet that, that becomes swath. And I know in New York City and in other parts of Westchester, we're really losing, it's really becoming the tale of two, of two neighborhoods, two cities where you have low income, albeit not enough low-income housing, but there's, there's options available that are subsidized by city government. And then there's market rate housing, and then sort of everyone in the middle is forced to move, unless they own, you know, they have equity in home marketing. Next slide, please. Five hundred million, again, not the scale that we'd be proposing here, but just another example of a mixed income project that we're doing in New Rochelle. This we did in partnership with, with HCR, the State's Housing Housing Office, and with Westchester County. They offered some subsidy through a, through a program, an acquisition program, and through and some additional subsidies from New Rochelle. This project, exactly, there's actually five different sites that we set up. And there were two churches, churches located in the ground floor, sort of storefront churches. So one of the churches, we actually bought an off-site property, built a new church for them. And then they, that was their, that was sort of their acquisition price. And then we moved them into the new church. And then the second church, New York Covenant Church, is staying onsite. They've moved temporarily, we're building a state-of-the-art facility for them in the ground floor of the building. This is seventy-five twenty-five, so seventy-five percent of the units are market rate, twenty-five percent of the units are affordable. We have a lot of parking in this building, I think around five hundred parking spaces. And, and again, it was, it was developed in partnership with the city and the state and the county. So it's a good example of sort of everyone working together to build, you know, what communities looking for. Next slide, please. And then our, the final project we'll highlight, we have a lot, we have many more projects, these just seem to sort of be well with what we're proposing here in Maranick. Is it the North White Plains, Metro North Station? It's literally right on, right on the station. We haven't started construction on this. We have all of our entitlements and permits, and we're ready to go early in twenty twenty-four. But it's a ninety-six unit mixed-use, mixed-income rental building. And it's, we designed this better, very energy efficiently. It's a hundred percent electric, lead silver. We've done this in partnership with, we're actually using a subsidy program. And this is a project that we would be proposing on, on the Luna, which is called the Mid Hudson Momentum Fund, a new, a new program that the E S D, the Empire State Development Corporation has put out for projects specifically near transit Westchester. And next slide, please. And I care and group, so Zipper. Unfortunately, our partners, I hear, heard your group, drove through today and are stuck in Thanksgiving traffic. So they're, they'll be here at some point, but we apologize for their tardiness.
Yes. So I, I can introduce our, our partners on your behalf. So I care and group is also a vertically integrated investor, developer, and operator of mixed-use real estate, residential, residential. They operate in New York as well as South Florida. They have a long history across various firms, but in the last three years alone, they have accumulated over one hundred five square feet in residential development, equating to about thirteen hundred residential units. So a couple of projects that we wanted to highlight of theirs, again, different scale from what we're proposing here across the street, is two oh one Clearwater in West Palm Beach and Florida. This is a four hundred and fifty-seven unit rental project anticipated to break ground next year. And if you go to the next slide, this project is located in the village of Portchester, very close by. So it's very close to the Portchester, measure north station. And also slated to break ground next year. This is a three hundred and twenty-five unit rental project with affordable component. This project was also an assemblage of commercial properties where they handled the relocation of some commercial tenants and provided support for them, as well as worked with the village of Portchester to acquire a public parking lot as one of the development sites. So now I'll turn it over to David, our architecture partner, to go through an introduction of this firm, as well as the proposal that we are bringing to the upper tier.
Hi, my name is David Gross. I'm the founder and executive partner at G F fifty-five Architects. We're a full-service architecture firm founded in nineteen eighty-four. And we've done maybe twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand units across the country, tri-state area, near south and Midwest. And we really know housing. It's a personal lifeblood passion of mine, and it's what I dedicated my career to. And it's an honor to be here presenting to you. A little bit about my firm. That's a representative storyboard about some of our projects. On the upper left is a project we just finished at the Jamaica Transit Hubs to building urban redevelopment. Then the one on the right is a similar project to what we're proposing to, tonight in terms of scales, a six-story building in Boston Street in Queens. And then below that is a mixed-use mixed-income building along the train station in the South Bronx. It has an elementary school, a pre-K, it has supportive housing, market rate housing. It has a DOT variance because it's so close to the train. It's a typical, difficult project. And we've done a lot of those. The one in the middle of the board is a three-building project in Manhattan. The one to the left is the school that we just finished. The one on the bottom left is a market rate and affordable job. And then the one in the middle on the bottom row is a project from BRP in Harlem called Rennie. This is a renovation of a historic building and in addition to it. And then the one on the right, I don't know if anybody recognizes it. It's called La Porte. It's in Grantminton and Oakley at, at Mount Vernon. It's a hundred percent affordable, was finished about ten years ago. Next page. And then our areas of practice are multifamily, schools, renovations, corporate offices, private residential. And we have a strong background in green building. We just finished the largest passive house project in two thousand and twenty-two at a historic church named Jamaica Queens. We had the, at one point, had the largest lead platinum project in the United States. That was in Harlem, five hundred thousand square feet. And we try to input that into every project we do. Next, please. Then, this is a little storyboard about our firm and, and maybe what we bring to the special sauce, and what the names things that we bring is the Revolt. I've lived in rise since nineteen eighty-eight. I'm on the, I'm a member of the Westchester County Association. I have an office in Westchester. It's registered as a license to a Westchester office. We pursue public work in Westchester. I'm going to show you seven projects that are on the boards or under construction in Westchester right now. I didn't get sucked in traffic because it took me eight minutes to get here. Trust me, if it's taking any longer, I would have been late. Because if you know me, I'm usually ten minutes late. But I'm a member of the New York State Association of Housing. I'm a board member, I'm a board member of the New York City Housing Conference, member of the Westchester County Association. I'm a board member of the Satorif Housing of New York. We've won the AIA Medal for Innovative Housing from the New York City Chapter. We won a ULI Award for Housing Project in Brooklyn. We won a ULI Award for Housing Project in Manhattan. We just won a Big Apple Brownfields Award. We're housing, we're local, we're committed. Any problem, any need, we're very connected to what's happening here. Sal's Pizza, we're here. Another thing is, um, next slide, please. Millennials need something different than I needed when I was an employee. And we were very hard in our office to provide a community and a culture to our staff so that we bring a positive attitude to all of our work. And then here's some of the projects that we are doing right now in Westchester. That's the one that's completed in Mount Vernon. This is a eight hundred and fifty thousand square foot project in, also Mount Vernon on McQuestion Parkway. It has a gym on the lower left. It has a, an incubator, it has retail, it has all sorts of things, amenities for the community. It's two separate buildings, it's a hundred, it's a hundred percent affordable. It's an eight-story, and I think an eighteen-story building combined. And you could see they're built differently because it's such a big project. We weren't going to do one housing project to make it look like a massive development. So we try to be sensitive to the scale and the scale of the neighborhood. The next project is the Remington Boys and Girls Club in New Rochelle. This is ninety-five percent complete. If you drive by there on Guyan, on Lincoln Park, it's, uh, we were hired by the Boys and Girls Club, and it's part of a three-building development, including a parking lot. And next slide is the affordable housing project that sort of pays, funds the whole project. And that's a, that's a hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet, eleven-story, a hundred and seventy-nine rented units. And then this is a project that we just recently, the next one, please. Uh, I don't know if it's going ahead, but it was approved by the town of Portchester, we kept it planning and zoning. And you can see, it was a little more interesting because we have this historic church that we worked with the State Historic Preservation Office of New York to maintain the church. And we built around the church, maintain the unit count and in the parking, et cetera. But, you know, they didn't want something typical, and we ship out and want to lose the church. So actually, we kept fifteen feet of the original building and built a U-shaped building around it, and that became the gym and the office, et cetera. So we try to bring something different to every project. That's my business partner, Kai. Any questions after this part, he's going to answer. And then the next project is a project that's just starting planning review in Harrison. It's a five, it's a six-story building with forty thousand square feet, thirty-two units, one-to-one parking, it steps down from Ballstead Avenue to Tremont in the back. So it starts out of a commercial neighborhood. We have zoning interpretation that allows us to have a, a multifamily building in a residential neighborhood. It's a four-story, it's a five-story building. And that's what we do. I think that's a similar scale. Then I'd like to start the proposal, right? Okay. Okay. Um, as you can see, we had a diagram of this, this relationship between the train and the building as the crow flies. But most people use sidewalks and car parks. So you, you can see the relationship of the project to how you get to it from the train station, which is a brutal connection for us. And we have the front door facing northwest, which is a gesture towards the train station. Next slide. It's an assemblage of two sites, one site that the developer owns already, or has, has access to. And the site that is, as part of the RFP, it allows the project to be bigger, to produce more tax dollars, have more units, and fulfill the mission of the RFP in a larger scale, not taller, just more. And then the next page shows you the massing. And the two sites combined sort of slide against each other, two rectangles. So we have a angled, sort of a barbell scheme. And the part of the left is facing Palmer Avenue and addresses the pedestrian as they approach the building. It's a sixty-story build, it's a sixty-story, sixty-foot building. As you know, the site steps from Palmer to from Palmer to Prospect. So the part on Palmer is lower than the part on Prospect. And the parking is underneath a continuous, I guess. Then you can see on the next page the massing and the look of the building, which is trying to repall the brick buildings in the neighborhood and the pitch roofs of the neighborhood, and try to keep it in scale and make it look like an apartment building. But we want it to make it more lively and definitely of today. So it has varied materials and colors in a, in a, you think, an attractive palette. And then the next slide shows one of the side areas where the, the center bar of the barbell is, uh, is going, and then it forms these nice courtyards for parking and for recreation. Next slide, please. That, that shows the massing as goes through the area. Again, we tried to make it lively and break up the massing. And so then this is the lowest level. And it's all parking. And then if you go to the next slide, please. It shows that we have a dedicated area for the fire department. We maintain the fire department parking, and that's access through parking lot from Palmer. The next page. The, on the Palmer side, on grade now, those are apartment units. And as the site slides lower, we have parking on that side, too. And we have a recreation space and a lobby from Prospect. And then tip, the typical floor three through six are a mix of units and unit types, studios, ones and twos. And the next slide is the roof. And basically, the roof is going to be used for mechanical equipment. We're going to have sound isolators so that the equipment doesn't impact the enjoyment of the apartment owners with too much noise. And then the next page, typical units. We have a two-bedroom that is, you know, there's living room in the center, and then we have a two-bedroom where the living room is at the end. We have one-bedroom studios, they're generous sizes, they're, uh, we're not reinventing the wheel here. It's a tried and true stuff. And the next page shows the amenities. We have ground floor recreation spaces, resident lounge, children's playroom, laundry facilities in every floor, indoor and outdoor bicycle parking, outdoor landscape areas as much as possible. And then that leads me to the next page, which shows some typical landscape solutions and how we're going to landscape the building against the adjacent properties to soften its impact visually. And we're, we're intending in the next page, we're intending to have street improvements and landscaping, new road paving, planting areas, decorative light poles, streetscaping. And then here's some ideas on green building design that we haven't fully worked out yet, but with, these are the, these are the, the green and sustainable strategies that we're going to investigate and, and are committed to do. So green building design or passive house, energy-efficient units, VRF pumps, high indoor air quality is the main goal for this. And the truth of the matter is that the, that the utility bills, if it's done properly for the tenants, will be lower. That's the proof of the pudding. You could have a statistic and do all sorts of commissioning. But at the end of the day, if the utility bills are lower, then the, the project is energy efficient. And then we have access design areas because people don't want to just live in their apartment, you know, if they want to enjoy the building itself. So we have a fitness room, we have a lobby, we have a communicating stair with health and wellness focus. And then something that's relevant for all projects in Westchester, everybody who lives in Westchester, is flood mitigation. And we all suffer with that because of the flooding in the, in Westchester, and our building may be sensitive to that. And we will do what we need to do to minimize the impact of flood mitigation locally and throughout global. And one of the strategies, and you could see it in our layout, is that the bottom floors aren't occupied. The bottom floor is parking, and then half of the second floor is parking so that if there's any flooding, it doesn't impact the humans. And then I'll give up the presentation, just talk about it for you.
Thank you. You're welcome. So clearly, we have an affordable, affordability crisis in this country, and specifically in this region. We have tenants who are underhoused. We have families who are doubling up, tripling up. And we have families who are leaving, leaving the region. I got a book, spoke about before. And, and a lot of the families and households that are leaving are really economic intent for communities because they can get better value in destinations, the south, southwest, really outside of, outside of the New York City metropolitan area. The housing stock in, you know, in this region is aging. There isn't a tremendous amount of supply or differentiation. And again, there's, there's a lot of opportunity and options for, for folks who, you know, are considered workforce, middle-class in this region, but can get a lot, a much bigger bang for their buck outside of the New York City metropolitan area. Next slide, please. So this is a chart, and it's a little hard to see on here, for incomes and Um so this is a chart and it's a little hard to see on here, incomes and salaries, but generally what we do when we. Um when we we start pre-development, thinking about, you know, uh who we're building to and for. Uh in communities that were that we that we operate in is look at sort of what the workforce is. You know, what individual incomes are across the board. And we study those and look at what, you know, families can afford, especially when you're looking at affordable projects where, you know. On a project like this where you're utilizing financing from the state and or local government, your income restrictions and income caps. And it's very specific, the methodology and the calculation, just who can afford what unit, how much rent is, what their maximum incomes are. So if you look at this chart, um you know. I think there's a misconception generally about what is affordable and what is affordable to whom. And in the affordable housing industry, we talk a lot about AMI, it's your area of meeting incomes. Uh the the hundred percent of AMI for family of four in Westchester County is hundred, about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year. So it generally is like a two-income household, um with with the four, you know, four, four household members. Um it varies, it varies and it varies, you know, that's a, that's a countywide uh income. It's not a, it's not necessarily a local income, so you have, you have cities and towns, municipalities and neighborhoods. Uh who skew, who skew a lot lower, uh but are beholden to sort of this, this average income. Uh for the purposes of financing affordable housing, you have communities where the incomes skew a lot higher. Um what we find though is if you look at, you know. I mentioned earlier, there are a lot, there are a ton of programs uh to develop sort of. Below sixty percent of AMI, so that would be for, you know, for a. Uh for a family of one, um. Uh income would be around, let's call it, you know, sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Uh family of two, slightly higher, family of, you know, family of three, four. In the, you know, in the mid, mid to high seventy thousand dollar a year range. Um. There isn't enough housing for those households and families, but there are a lot of programs that are available to develop, develop housing. If you look to the right side of these charts. Be a hundred eighty, eighty to a hundred twenty percent of AMI. Those incomes range in the low end to maybe two thousand dollars a year for for a single person to um. To about a hundred and sixty thousand year, dollars a year for a dual income household. And if you sort of cross, you know, cross check those, those sort of incomes and what. What those affordability ranges uh provide for, you know, actual working people. Um what you find is a lot of, a lot of people who make, you know. Good salaries aren't considered rich, but you know, you know, certainly are not on the lower, lower income spectrum. They're they're sort of priced out and they don't qualify for what we consider affordable housing. Um at least affordable housing financed by, you know, under regulatory and financed by a city or state agency, in partnership with city or state agency. So if you look at, you know, we just did some, you know, we filled some spot incomes uh based on, you know. Based on sort of the the tendency that we generally target for our projects. Um you know, a teacher with a good amount of experience, not, not a senior teacher, but not a junior teacher, average salary is about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um so if that teacher uh is is married or is uh, you know, partnered with, with a partner and they have two kids. You know, they're generally earning too much to qualify for something that we would generally consider affordable under a tax credit or or state program. Um but they certainly don't earn enough to purchase a single-family home, especially with the interest rate environment, what it is right now. Um and and, you know, down payment requirements. Um same goes for, you know, healthcare workers. Um you know, service unions, uh service employees, retail employees. Uh a lot of, a lot, you know, a lot of people that that are within sort of that income bracket. They want affordable housing, they need affordable housing, but they make too much uh to qualify for what is traditionally affordable housing. So we tend to, we tend to to develop our projects with a wide range of incomes. We provide units for those sort of, you know, low and very low income families, but we also like to provide housing for, you know. This this group of often overlooked uh yeah overlooked um residents. Um so I think, you know, given the scale that we're able to achieve here uh by by coupling. Uh municipal lot with the adjacent uh property, we're able to build a larger project. We're also able to differentiate incomes a little bit more and create a more holistic community, um with, I think, you know. Income strata from across, you know, across the uh the spectrum, so you'll have. Uh people are, you know, that are earning, you know, sort of on the low end to, you know, sort of the the high end of the of the of of sort of what we consider workforce middle income. All living together in a good community. Next slide please. Um. So, you know, as I mentioned before, we have a range of studios, three bedrooms, uh the affordable affordability levels are mixed. Um we have some flexibility within these affordability affordability levels based on uh feedback from, from, from you all and from the uh. Uh from the village, um so it's not like, it's not a, it's not a science, it's sort of an art. Um and also we have the ability to work with uh, you know, local government, state government. Uh in the county to refine these, this income mix based on, you know, feedback we get. So this is not, you know, I want to be clear, what we're proposing is not to be all end all, it's, it's a starting place and. You know, we generally um. We like to think of ourselves as sort of a good community charter, so we will hopefully do what we want to. To develop a project and an income mix, um you know, for the best suit uh people who live here that. Quite frankly, know more about community than I do, it's not. Um obvious. We do have a fair amount of those in our office and and you know, at the partner level, we do live in Westchester. Um so. Um. On the high end, the hundred and twenty, a hundred and ten percent of AMI, AMI units that we're proposing, uh those are still uh. At least twenty percent below market, um for this market, so they're still below market. Um and you know, as you get down the income spectrum, they they become deeper and deeper. Uh in the affordability, affordability perspective. Um. A bulk of our units are really between that, that sixty percent and a hundred percent of AMI. Um but we do have new units, you know, at the higher end and also at the lower end to balance out. Next slide please. So, when you build affordable housing, mixed income housing and you utilize city, uh state. County and local program. Um there is a fair amount of oversight and um and requirements as it relates to marketing. Um we all take sort of income verification and the marketing process very seriously. Um to make sure that, you know, what we're building, you know, the programs that we're building are actually going to the tenants that that they're, they're supposed to. Um and so we've, we've gone through countless lotteries uh with with HCR, um with the agency. Uh we've gone through countless lotteries, uh city agency. Um and these, and you know, we've worked with uh well-respected marketing agents who specialize in this type of product. Who don't have any income qualify and we have checks and balances and we have belts and suspenders and we oftentimes hire. Uh three different groups to double and triple check um the income verification process to make sure that we're. The tenants who. Propose for, uh on this project, we are uh partnering with GRC Management. Um they're a full-service management company based in New York. Um they're managing one of our properties in Harlem, the National Urban League headquarters, building a hundred and seventy-one. Um. Low-income supportive units and some units sort of at the lower end of the workforce tier uh on Undertwenty Fifth Street alongside a D. Uh new headquarters to National Urban League, a civil rights museum, uh as well as retail and office space. Um so we're in the lease-up process uh right now, with GRC, they're doing a great job. Um. All told, they they manage seventy-five developments and about seventy-three, seventy-three hundred units of housing and they specialize in. Uh next slide please. So benefits the village and Zip can come up and speak a little bit more of that, but uh Zip wanna show.
Thanks Andy, um so I'll just uh conclude our presentation today by providing a little bit of summary. Um of our proposal that that is more focused on uh what is the village getting out of this. Um so of course, as Andy mentioned, um because of the scale and size of our development lot, we're able to offer a hundred and eighty-seven. Of uh rental housing and varying uh bedroom sizes and levels of affordability. Uh as Andy mentioned, of course, we're uh, you know, fully open to working with the community and with the village to uh. Figure out the exact right income mix for the local population. Um. Another thing um that this building can offer because of the uh large scale and size is the uh amenities. Um David walked you through the programming a bit, but I just wanted to highlight the uh scale, I mean, because of the ground floor uh. Rec, rec spaces that we can offer facing both street frontages at Palmer and Prospect Ave, we can offer a total of um. Slightly over eight thousand square feet of uh amenity space. Uh you know, initially ba- based on the uh, you know, similar projects uh like this that we've done in the past, the, you know. Highly requested and highly popular amenities are always the uh resident lounge, children's playroom. Uh fitness area, laundry, that kind of thing, but uh, you know, we're, we're again open to working with the village uh to to figure out. If there is a um need for something more specific or in this area, uh you know, we have, we have the space to do so. Um. Another um. Elements uh that that this project can uniquely offer uh is our desire to maximize the number of parking spaces available for public use. So um I know we went over it in in the parking section, um but I just wanted to highlight some, some numbers for you. Um per zoning based on the number of residential units uh that we're offering. Um the, the amount of parking that is dictated is a hundred and four spaces for residential use and thirty-three spaces for public use. Just based on the amount of square footage uh that can be uh built on the ground and second floor here. Um however, in discussion with our um marketing and leasing partner, they feel that. Um the residential uh component of of the building may not need that much um residential space. So working with the village and working with the zoning board, um we came up with an alternate calculation that provides. Eighty-nine parking spaces to the residential component, which frees up ninety-eight uh parking spaces for public and municipal use. So this is another thing that um we would work with the village to determine the exact right number that was needed for for each people. Um. And of course, uh local job creation during construction and permanent staffing, there, you know, there will be. Um jobs generated during construction and jobs generated on a permanent basis um that we always look to. Uh hire locally for either right from the village of the Mariner or in the uh greater west district. Um if you'll go to the next slide, um. David uh spoke to most of this, but you know, just a touch base on uh again, as we close here. Um what we're proposing for uh for this building at Luna across the street is is a contextual design that really celebrates the. Character of the village, we like to contribute to the transit-oriented development goals um with this proximity to the. Um train station with offering bike parking, that this is the exact type of. Um. Uh development that we we like to work on and and partner on. Um providing thoughtful of the space with sustainable landscaping um for both public and private use. Uh our commitment to green building practices, energy efficiency, full electrification. Uh a commitment to health and wellness through the um, the way we design the building and and the amenities that we program. Um enhance, enhancing the uh streetscape with with new painting, new planters, new lighting, really. Um enhancing what is already here, um and of course. Uh trying to mitigate the, you know, flooding issues in in the area. Um. So uh with that, um I'd like to thank you all for listening to us and um open it up for Q and A.
Thank you, I just want to uh. Thank you for your, your presentation. It was a very ambitious presentation. Uh. Yeah you. That uh that second lot wasn't in the RFP proposal. Uh and you know, I, I. I won't be making the final decision on this, but I think that that. That is going to be a problem because of the, the size of it, uh I think that the, the community uh. Is very concerned about adding that many extra units, so I'm just gonna tell you that going forward. And like I said, I'm not gonna be decision-making here. Uh but uh, you know, that, I just wanna point out that that lot was not in our RFP. And I, and uh, you know, it, it, it makes it uh. A uh, a much larger uh. Proposal and to make it work, I think you, you had to go over the AMIs and go into the one-twenty's and the hundreds and the eighties. Which was, we were looking for more of on the scale below eighty. Uh. But that being said, it, it's, it's a, it's a nice looking proposal and I appreciate you all coming out on a rainy night. And I just, you know, wanted to be upfront with you about what I think some of the challenges to it were. Is there anyone else on the board? Nor?
Yeah, I mean, I have a couple of questions, so one is just the finishes, or or is there gonna be a difference with it between the interior, the interior finishes of the units for the?
No, they're scattered out, so we, we don't, we don't differentiate between unit finishes. No, sorry. Okay, um no, we don't differentiate between the unit finishes in in mixed income properties, so all the units look exactly alike. They'll all be scattered throughout, um so there'll be no, you know, no stigma, no differentiation, everyone lives together.
Okay. And then how, so what's the, I mean, I know you touched on the marketing plan, but is there, is there, is there. A geographic area that you plan in marketing in or that you run it yourselves to?
In the county, I don't believe, or in, in. In New York City, they have very specific uh community board preferences outside of New York City, they're generally aren't. Um we adhere to, you know. Because we're financing this with the housing community regivable dollars, which is the state, state housing program, they have specific apartments that we have to repair to. Um but I don't believe that they're uh. I don't believe their income are are location-specific. Um we can, you know, work with, what we've done in in the past, if we've worked with municipalities on a marketing effort, like, you know, if. For instance, in New Rochelle, um there's a big push for artists, but because of fair housing laws and using public dollars, you can't. You can't just fill a building with artists because it's gonna open up everyone else. So we work on a marketing campaign to, you know, specifically target different artist communities and hopefully get, you know. As many artists as we can without actually just having it be a building that's only. You know, senior populations, other types of population for that, you know.
Are most artists starving artists? Are most artists starving artists?
Yeah. Um. Can I, can I also just touch on uh to Tom, to your, to your question or comment really quickly? So I think the way we were thinking about this, this development is. Um yes, there are a lot of units and yes, we we utilize some AMIs above sort of what we typically consider tax credit housing below eighty percent of AMI. Um. But in doing so, you know, I think we still capture the same number, if not more, units. You know, at the eighty or below that we would have if we just did one building on on the municipal lot. Um and we're able to sort of, you know. We thought of it as a benefit from parking standpoint because we're effectively taking away municipal lot. And we wanted to try to maximize as much parking back to the, back to the town uh or to the village as possible. And that was sort of how we were thinking about, about the project, but we, we, you know, I hear you.
Thank you. Ben, can we, Nor?
I don't know if you were finished.
I'm done, huh?
So, one thing, my, my question is, you know, I know you touched a little bit on flooding and areas, something that narratives deeply, you know. Flooded whenever it rains, I know it's raining today, I know many of our residents are a little nervous and it's a kind of a trauma piece for them. Um I wanna know how was, how would your building, cause it's bigger than the scope of what we expect, cause we only were offering the Hunter Lot. How would you retain any water or ensure that none of the water will kind of run off into our, our neighboring community?
I, I think, um. It's on, if you go. I wanted to point out to you in the appendix, there are several strategies. For water retention that we could build into the building. There's two uh roof systems. One is a, a blue roof system, which. One of the blue roof system has a, a cell of uh water retention area underneath. The roofing material itself and that holds the water till the flooding goes down and it brings the water into the. Uh uh storm sewer system much slower. And that's a tried, uh true system, another one is the green roof system that. Another one is the green roof system that if you have, um, uh, plants on the roof, it slows the water. Uh runoff into the, into the system. Also, we can put the similar cells underneath the green roof system to. Have the roof itself be a whole detention. Uh system, it could also have a, a more traditional typical detention. Of. System on the roof where you just make the roof, uh, particularly water tight and have the sides of the roof go up, uh, sort of about. Two or three feet so that the roof can be, can actually be hold the water. And then it slowly releases the water into the system over time, so you're not getting that flash flooding. Cause so much of the issue is the flash flooding, the water doesn't build up and it has nowhere to go. And we're certainly near the water with the bottom of the Marinerick Avenue being the Long Island Sound. And so I, I know that that's really, it's, uh, it's, it's very real, we have to, we have to look at that. The other thing is we would have a permeable, there are surfaces around the building so that the building, uh, the water flows into the site just doesn't run off. On the asphalt into the sewer system. But there, but there are definite, um, ways to do it and if it's, since it's a new building, it, it. It can be done.
Thank you. Uh Lou and Lilani, do you have any questions or concerns you'd like to voice?
Sure.
Go ahead, Lou, go ahead.
Lilani goes, go, go ahead.
Okay, um, so thank you for making this presentation. I, my quite, I, one, I wanted to make a comment and, um, I appreciated how you, um, addressed. The whole affordable housing and the, the, the misconceptions of it and, um. What people may perceive what affordable housing is and who it affects and it te- technically, I believe that it affects each and every one of us. Um in some shape or form, so I just wanted to say, it was like a comment, but also thank you, um, on how you presented that. Because we don't often think about, um. All of, uh, you know, the, the, the people in the middle. We don't often think about people in the middle, so I really, um, appreciate that. Then, uh, Manny asked my question regards to stormwater management, um, and. What was my question, um? You asked, you, you said at the, at, at the, at, towards the end in terms of long-term employment, um, that it may be available. And I just wanted to know what did that look like? That may be, uh, a- available to our residents?
Yes, I mean, for a building like this, we would expect, um, some, uh, management personnel, so we are. Uh figuring in the unit mix for a live-in superintendent. Um this building would also have, uh, a staff of, uh, quarters, um. Perhaps a, you know, contract for cleaning, that kind of thing. And, uh, um. I think right now we are proposing with parking as self-park to provide, um. Uh maximum flexibility and, and lower wait times for the residents, but, you know, um. The staffing would be affected by that discussion as well.
And, um, the, you, in your rec center, is that rec center, um, have the, uh, the possibility of becoming. Something like a community room or anything that, uh, is that something that you charge? Uh not just the, um, that you would charge the community, can the community have, sorry, can the community have access to that rec room? Or any of the spaces, um, within this building or is it just to the residents?
I think it's flexible, um, we, we have got eight thousand, we have usable space, it's sort of not residential, I think for a building. You know, any building, really, you'd want to have some resident-only space, um, that would be sort of categorized and then any of these space like the gym and. Let's just play around, uh, launch facilities that would only be open to residents just from a safety perspective and, you know, just from a safety perspective. But I think here we do have some flexibility around working with the community to provide, you know, uh, non-residential other uses and, you know. I don't, you know, I don't want to pretend to value what I think they should be, I think that comes from a discussion to the community, you know, what, you know, what works best. Or make no sense.
Okay, thank you.
Flexibility there.
Lou?
Uh yeah, thank you so much for this presentation, uh, I'll, um. Also say it's ambitious, uh, and, and much larger than we expected, uh, but that hit me two different ways. And I'll share that with you, uh, the positive is in that it's, it's so many more units, but as you show them, you know, each one of those units. There would be a tremendous demand for because the need is there and, uh, that's, um. That's a good thing, however, uh, the sheer size of the, uh, of the project you're proposing at the highest point in the village. Um is, um, is something that, that would be a hard sell. I, I, I think it's a, it's, um, it's, I think it's big. Um the other question thing I have is that, uh, if you're using that additional piece of property there. I'm a little disappointed that there isn't a parking access. Um suggested for both Prospect and Palmer, that if you're gonna have a big parking garage, that you can go in from both sides. And help the, uh, the traffic flow a little bit and not, and not have it all on one side. Um I also, oh, um, would ask to pose this as a question. Is there a, um, a scenario where you could, uh, have more parking and maybe, maybe fewer, fewer apartments? Uh, or, and is there a scaled-down, uh, uh, Plan B version of this that wouldn't, um. That wouldn't hit the community quite so hard in the face with this, um, this large, large building?
Thanks for those questions. So I'll address the, um, the parking question first, there's actually a garage entrance. Um on both avenues, so there's a, a entrance on Palmer Avenue and an entrance on Prospect and. Uh exactly to your point, we go that was to manage, um, and be able to anticipate the traffic flow. Um I will also comment because I, I don't think we brought this up, um, specifically in our presentation, even though there was a diagram about it. Um but there are, um. I believe six spaces that are dedicated for, um, exclusive fire department use. Um that is in sort of the easement area between the proposed development and the, uh, the fire department, um, to the. Um as far as the, um, overall program split between parking and residential, um. I, I think our, our general responsibility is flexibility and.
Yeah, I think it is, I think generally we're flexible, I think to, to build a project, um, you know. This scale, just in terms of square footage, regardless if it's, it's more parking and less units or more units, less parking. There just needs to be, uh, you know, it's. There has to be a balance from an account perspective to make sure that the project works. But when the parking perspective. Parking doesn't generate, you know, a tremendous amount of revenue, so you can't use it to, to size a mortgage and so. Or a big of a mortgage, so you have to play around that, and that's it, this is an affordable housing project and so. We are relying on state, uh, and, and county subsidies. And so, you know, based on discussions that, you know, we can have, you know, with the, with the village and with. Um with other local partners, there maybe is a, a ability to scale down the housing, um, and, and maybe some potential subsidies. Uh to make that work, uh, I think, you know, you can probably. I think there's some flexibility there, I guess, whether it be, um, make the building less, less tall in terms of the number of authorities or shift the massing around. Uh I think we're trying to play around with what is currently allowed for zoning, but I think we can be flexible in terms of working with the village and, and coming with the project and maybe be, be less, uh. And I don't, I don't say this in a bad way, but less offensive from a, from a s- scale and density perspective.
Cause it's big.
Yeah.
Probably big, yeah, yeah, all right. Thank you very much and, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, thank you.
Uh, thank you for coming out again tonight. I believe that in the future, the board is gonna have a couple of public hearings. About the proposals and, uh, I'm sure I'll invite you to participate at that time.
And if you have any more questions or you want us to look at any additional scenarios or make any tweaks, we're happy to do that in interim.
Thank you very much. All right, that being said, I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, good night.
Good night.